Yep, please go with me and your orders, please guys, the place to play.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approve the agenda, I have one addition, business item C. It will be website permanent AV link. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no other additions, I'd like to make motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call was sustaining, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes for the August 13 meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, August 13, 2019. Support.
Move and support it. Approve the minutes from the August 13 regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. Moving on. The next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $321,786.09. We took in receipts of $24,871.84 and made disbursements in the amount of $32,404.36, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $314,253.57.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. Moving on, if no one has an objection, we have representatives from the Richmond Community School Board up here tonight, and rather than make them stay till the end of the meeting, I would say if they want to, they can make a little presentation or speak to us, now's the time. Margaret Talbot is here.
Thank you.
And then another lady?
This, I was going to introduce her, this is Kathy Campo, she is one of our teachers at Richmond Middle School.
So you're K.
K for Kathy, C for Campo.
And you live in town?
I do, about a mile and a half up the road.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rummanek, hi. We are just here this evening, not sure if you know, but we have a bond issue that is coming up for a vote in November, and we have some just basic information that we'd like to pass out, and we'd also like to just give you a little presentation of what we're doing. And Mrs. Campo is one of our teachers from the middle school, and so she has volunteered her time to come and let you know what the bond is about. Mrs. Campo?
Like you said, my name is Kathy Campo, I teach technology at Richmond Middle School, and I'm here tonight to talk about the bond. Richmond Schools has put on the ballot for November 5 a bond for 38.71 million. If approved, it'll increase our mills by 1.45, or about 40 cents a day for the average homeowner. Some might pay more, but majority of people will pay less than that. If the bond is approved, we're going to touch on four main areas. Enhancing student safety, facility updates, because our buildings are, you know, getting older, improving the learning environment for all the school facilities, and then improving and updating our athletic facilities as well. The last time we went for a bond was 2013. We completed all the projects that we had on that bond, and even under budget, so we did better than we thought we would. So far, this budget has been approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury, they reviewed it, they looked at all the projects we're anticipating to do, and they said, yes, this is going to be a great opportunity for us. So now is the time for us as a community to take the next step to help keep our schools and our students safe, secure, and up to date. One example I'm going to give personally on my own is at the middle school. The other two buildings all have secure entries, where when you walk in the door, you are unable to get anywhere farther than into the main office before you're approved to move out. The middle school is the only building in the district that does not have that. If you walk into the middle school, there's, you're not forced, I guess, to say, to go into the office. You, like, if someone gets buzzed in through the buzzer, there's nothing that forces them to go to the office, they could walk down any hallway. And as a teacher, that, I feel, puts me and my students at risk. We know who's coming in from the camera, but once they walk in, you know, there's no guarantee they're going to check in, you know, or not be a threat to us. And for me, last year, my classroom was right by the main door, so that was even more personal to me, because I was right there front and center. So something, that's one example of something that we're looking to change, to make our entryways more secure, you know, update things, help keep our students safer. More families are choosing to move into the Richmond area, and they're enrolling their kids in Richmond Community Schools, which is wonderful, it's good for us, it's good for our communities. Our enrollment's expected to increase by 100 kids over the next five years, and I don't see any problem in that, because we're growing like crazy. And so, to accommodate this increase in students, we need to build onto our elementary school, we're running out of classrooms. As most of you know, our fourth grade moved to the middle school this year, not because we're making them middle schoolers, but it was just a space issue, the Lee School is full. We need to expand and update and help provide for all these wonderful kids that are moving to our community. And for our preschool, early ed, we need to help provide for them. Like Margaret said, we brought fact cards with us tonight. They give some general information about the bond. Also, this Sunday at 1:00 PM at the Richmond High School, Mr. Wamsley, our superintendent, is holding, like, an information session, the doors open up at noon. You'll be able to tour the facilities. All throughout the facilities are orange stickers that show what kind of things are going to be updated if the bond is approved. You can ask questions, he's going to give a lot of details about what's being covered in the bond, so it'd be a great time to go if you have more questions or if you're looking for more information. So, thank you very much all for your time, and I hope we will all vote yes on November 5.
Thank you. Anyone who goes for our lobby?
Oh, sure.
We have a table in the lobby where everybody comes in.
That'd be great.
And they're really coming in this week to pay their taxes.
Fabulous, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, so this is first time in six years, huh? I didn't realize it was that long.
Yes, yes, six years, and we're part of the facilities upgrades are finishing stuff, we did a certain portion of wood roof, new roofs, you know, that kind of stuff, so it's, it's those things that we didn't do. And all of our parking lots were adding parking lots, parking space. We, we run out of places for people to park, especially when you come to our auditorium for a play or a band concert, something like that, so adding, adding that kind of stuff. And, and the safety, the safety features, we're getting all new, or we hope to get all new fire, fire alarms throughout the buildings, the clocks are, they're, they're safety, you know, they're they're safety items, so all of those are being replaced throughout the district, so, that sort of thing.
Okay, election's going to be in November.
November 5.
And everyone in the township is going to be getting a notice about that from us. And we hope everyone exercises their right to vote.
And they vote at Columbus Township Hall for school elections, yes.
They're going to get a, they're going to get a notice, that affects everybody personally.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
Send, oh, okay, okay.
Correct?
Yes, I am, there, Macomb, uh, Macomb Company is making me send out.
So everybody's going to get?
So I'm sending them out.
A notice where it is, when it is, and all that good stuff.
No, just where it is.
Just where, not when?
Yeah, where and when.
Okay.
Interesting, you think, I guess people don't know that that's where they vote, but, okay.
Thank you.
But, and people will be in the township, but I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, there's always mistakes made.
Right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're more than welcome to stay, but we're not tying you down, so.
Thank you, appreciate it very much, thanks to see everyone, thank you.
Was the first millage, has it paid off, is that, is that millage over?
It is, it is not, no, it is not in addition to, it's not, it doesn't change. It, it, yeah, it just, it just will continue on, yes.
So this is a continuation of an existing rate?
It's, it's new items that we're doing, but it, the cost to taxpayers and it's, it's not, it's not an increase, it's just going to go out further.
Extend the bond.
That's an important point.
How long is your bond?
Can bear it.
Was it a 20-year?
Correct, yes.
Did you start out in 2013 with a 20-year bond?
Correct.
All right.
Any other questions?
I think it's important to emphasize that it's not a, that there's no additional cost to it that isn't being carried already in this, in approving this millage.
Yes, and that.
You're not going to pay another $12 a month or whatever.
Correct, yes.
You already are.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Correspondents, item A. We have an invitation to, from the DDA.
Sir Al, may you good luck.
Good night, thank you, Thomas. It's going to be out September 19, the information is all there. So it's up to you if you'd like to attend. Any questions?
Township can reimburse back?
Yeah, well, we've got, what, three, three out of the four has a small P in both. So, I think, I don't know, restoration doesn't have, I read it this morning.
Township will reimburse back?
Yep, will reimburse, anybody close? I don't know, MTA, St. Clair County meeting, there's a cost to that.
There's a cost to the DDA of $35.
For the DDA, yeah. I don't think there is for the Great Lakes Restoration, I don't know. There may be.
We've got to register by tomorrow.
I'll see, I may. I may, I'll let you know.
Tomorrow's the deadline.
Right.
Well, just pay for an extension.
But they're usually not that strict on the deadline. Because you have a week, so. On to item B. On this one, we need, we need somebody to go, and I don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
I'll go.
It's the St. Clair Countywide Trail Meeting Invitation. Kind of outlines, if more than one person wants to go, we have to find out if that's.
What is that?
Thursday, September 13.
I think we both like September 13.
Which is a Monday.
September 30th, at 1:30 PM?
I'll be in Detroit that day anyway, but.
I think since, yeah, I'll probably, I'll let you know.
So, check and make sure that that's not a problem, that they're representing.
Pardon?
Because Joe said he wants to go.
I know.
Colleen didn't say anything.
No, I have a fundraiser for the school district that day.
I don't know if there'll be more than enough or not.
So when you call in, make sure that that's not a problem, that you ring three phones.
I'll do.
Is that the auditorium, I don't think that'll be a problem. But, better to ask.
Could you charge for that?
No, I'll charge.
Could be interesting. But we need to keep involved in that.
The first one we went to was very interesting, as well as the second one.
Yeah, I made the first one there, Joe and I went to that one.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think, gee, here's.
I guess it's the second and the third, really.
I don't know, but we have to stay abreast of what's going on, because this will affect us in a couple ways.
Affect your park profoundly.
Well, Fred Moore, the park, and Sunday County Line, which will really affect us. So, we have to see what's cooking. Okay, so coordinate between you, make sure at least somebody's going to go. We need somebody there. Okay, moving on, item C, Great Lakes Restoration Invitation. They're going to have a meeting on October 18.
At the Henry Ford in Mayborn?
I think so.
It was just here on Sunday.
That's a Sunday?
No, I was just here just past the mall.
Oh, were you?
Yep.
October 13th, Monday?
What's that?
I wouldn't. At the car shop?
No, no, I went and saw something else. I saw there when I was there in July, spent many hours there. First time I was there since I was 12 years old.
Many years that I was there. Okay, so you have an invitation, you're, you're free to go, might be very informational. The next item is the St. Clair County MTA meeting. September 18. And Thursday is the reservation date?
And that's at the island. Island Grill.
It's outside.
Free out to the island, huh?
Well, the water's down a little bit anyway. Actually opened the one road up again.
It's not on the island, it's a, no, it's at the clubhouse.
Marine.
Oh, okay.
It's outside.
But it's outs, well, there is an outside thing, but this will be set up in the beach area.
Oh, I saw Iceland Grill slides.
Well, that's what it, it's, yeah. But it's, it's a beach venue, so.
There's a small P involved, and if anyone intends more to reimburse you.
What did, how much did it say, $12?
I'm sure Mr. Dieter will be there and give you a lot of information.
Who's Mr. Dieter?
You don't know Mr. Dieter?
Well.
He's an MTA.
An MTA, you're saying?
He's a, he's very active, he's a supervisor in Grant Township.
Yeah, so he was a supervisor.
Yeah, he's also very, very active in MTA.
Okay.
He's a statewide, you know, secretary or treasurer or something for the MTA. Nice guy, wonderful guy.
But he does, so.
And he's on, if you want to know anything about state goings on or the MTA, he's the man to ask for. His only function in life is to, on top of all that stuff.
He loves it.
He does.
He's very good at it.
Yes, he is, he's very.
We ought to have him come in here and brief us.
Probably would.
Okay, moving on. Okay, old business, resolution 2019-10, local road funding application. We discussed this last month. We are applying for matching money to pave one mile of St. Clair Highway from the overpass to Melrose, because that's rough and rough. The rest is holding up pretty good. The total cost is on here? It's anticipated $155,000, of which we'll pay half. So it'll be $77,500. And this will be for next year. So we need to approve this resolution, bring out this resolution.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-01, local road funding application. The casco township amount will be $77,500 to be matched by the St. Clair County Road Commission.
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
To resurface.
Oh, yes, to resurface.
It's part of the document here. If you go two inches thick, they pay a lot more money than if you only go an inch and a half. So, it seems unofficial to me. Okay, moved and supported to adopt resolution 2019-10, local road funding matching money for 2020. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, now we discussed this on several meetings. We approved the lighting, but then I got, they finally got back to me on the charges. And where I was hoping it was going to be very small, it's not so small. The reason is, they had to put in two poles and run secondary wires. So I looked at St. Clair Highway, and you can see they're putting new poles in too. There are poles there, but the light will not be, you asked me where I wanted the light. And I told him, when you come over the overpass, I want that light as close to the middle of the road as you can get. So if they use the existing light, it will put the light way off center. I don't want people heading for the light
Right.
in the fog, in the snow, and then end up going off the side of the overpass.
I mean, it's infrastructure.
So, we've done it before, I'm sure it was much cheaper. There is a credit involved, because the cost is primarily the poles and the wire. And, let's see if I can stick a page here. Our out-of-pocket cost is $35,3250, which is approximately one-year savings, we're going to see from our conversion to LED, but it's a one-time deal. So, I would recommend that if you want the lights, those four locations that we approved this agreement.
I make a motion to approve our DET to put in these lights for the amount of $3500, $3,532.50.
I'll support that. Moved and supported. Approve the DTE purchase agreement in the amount of $35,3250 cents. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Aye, Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, park update, not too much has happened. My understanding, and I'll give us a recon in a minute, that our consultant's going to be coming to the planning commission next week with a presentation to them, to see if they agree with her or not. And if they do, then get a recommendation from them.
Yeah, I did pass out copies of the plans to the planning commissioners last.
Right, and we have nothing else to give, I assume she may be bringing something, but as if we get something, we can email it to everybody. So they have, but right now, we don't have any more than what you had before. So, that's all I can tell you. As far as I know, she's going to be giving the presentation.
That's good.
Any questions on that? Moving on. As we discussed last month, we want to do a little landscaping by the hall here, because what we have there looks really crummy. So, we do have a picture that Marine City Nursery came up with, computer-generated pictures, which obviously always looks better and good. And, with the complete job, the labor, materials, yada, 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 everything comes to $1,268.50. I don't think that's unreasonable for what we're getting. I don't know if it's going to look that good, but it will, far better than what it does.
Pardon you, I'll do this?
Yes.
How will we go forward and authorize the cost of $1,268.50 to to landscape the front of the building?
I'll support that.
Kudos to Colleen for, yeah, the, yeah.
Yep, thanks, Colleen, because she worked with the lady to get all this going.
Hotel Fort Dean in the morning. Eighty's ago, her trucks were loaded and they have an awful lot of work this fall to do, but this is, this is a really half-a-day job for them. And hopefully we can get it in, I will be bringing a large pot to put in back of the sedum against the wall, so we don't plant anything in the corner against the wall. And I'll plant that up for you. We'll do that seasonally. The sedum was put in last week. The water was off, but.
Have you taken care of that?
What water's off?
Well, I had to go back home and get a thingamajiggy to turn the knob. And when I turned the knob, nothing happened, so I turned the knob off, and I took my thingamajiggy back home, and I went home and got water and watered the plants.
We're going to need water for them to do.
There's water, but yeah, from the basement, turn it on.
Okay. That's what would be a nice thing to know, yes.
Colleen, what's those cornstalk-looking plants?
Um, they're, that's, that's the feather grass. I didn't want to do, I didn't want to do more of this, so.
Come and tell around your office, Joe.
It's, it's a feather.
They got me in the front.
It's a feather grass that doesn't need much.
You go back, you're going to the back?
We tried to put them in the back.
We tried to put them in the back if we could. I think so.
Way in the back.
And then, if you're satisfied with this, if you would consider in the springtime, we have two beds out front. Now, they're already timbered, so we just need to pull the wildflowers out, and perhaps five, two, three, seven shrubs. I would think soft-meadowed green shrubs. And that will, that will just take a little bit of peat moss, a little bit of paddy soil, and I'll put the shrubs in, so it's, it's none of the labor of that, it's just the cost of the shrubs. And it'll just be low low bordering, not boxwood, but something a softer needle, but dark green.
Do you need to include funds for that with, in the motion to amend it?
Uh, no, that's all right, because we won't do that until spring. Yeah, we'll, we'll cull out the cornflowers and the cone flowers and whatever else is out there, and replant that someplace else. And then, in the early spring, we'll amend the beds and, and we'll pull something else in, and I'll, I'll get, I'll work you up a cost for that.
I told Fern, and I come see her for my project.
Oh, she's the girl, yeah, she's the girl who's doing it, yep, she is.
The two beds out front are very small.
Yeah, they're just small.
Three feet wide.
Yeah, yeah.
Tiny.
So you just need to amend the soil a little bit and.
Give you all winter to fix it.
Clam it, yeah. Consider it.
We have a motion and a support to approve the price of $1,268.50 for landscaping at the hall from Marine City Nursery Company. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill? And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, qualified voter file computer purchase. This came up really quick. We have this computer, and the IT guy was in today, because we got some major glitch with the assessment computer. And he worked on it all day, and I still don't think he's done. So I was talking to him, and apparently we have two other computers that even though they've upgraded to Windows 10, they won't be protected after the first of the year. So, between now and probably next month, we'll have to approve those two.
That getting the new or getting the protected?
No, getting new ones.
I don't think you can upgrade it, you have to go up to six, you have to have 64
No, mine isn't.
to be covered, we're at 32. And, when they went to Windows 10, they gave it to you for free. But now, they're taking away the protection unless you have it upgraded.
You mean, you don't, they still don't offer Windows Defender? And you can't install something?
I don't know, there's some, like, number 832 thing that's got to go with it, and you can't put that in these, apparently, so.
Do what we need to do.
If you believe them, he said we don't have any option. So, that'll be coming up. But for tonight, we're looking at one computer, and this is for the voter files. So we have to stand top of that, we have an election coming up in November. So we have to stand top of that, we have an election coming up in November, so we'd like to get all this put in and squared away. And the amount is five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that's about what we have.
I move that we authorize expenditure of five hundred and thirty-nine ninety-nine to upgrade the assessors or to replace. Is that true, replace?
Replace.
Replace the, uh, computer for the assessor?
No, for the QBF.
QBF.
That voter file for the clerk.
I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the purchase of a QBF computer in an amount of, did you give me the amount?
Yes, he did, yes.
Five thirty-nine ninety-nine.
Assessor's computer.
Yeah, he's working on it.
Okay, is there any discussion? A roll call vote, please?
Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. St. Clair County Road Commission Work Order. We were planning on doing some burn work. We put extra limestone on the one road, I think that might get care of that. And we have one terrible road where the water runs over the road. Unfortunately, it's in the middle of a mile, and the water doesn't wanna go one way or the other. So, uh. The water level around Harson's Island's finally gone down, so the Road Commission's getting a little bit of time. So I talked with Mike, and he came out, and we looked at it, and he worked out the price. We have money in the burn fund, and anything that comes out of there is match. So. The total cost is gonna be about twenty-five grand, cause there's a lot of culvers there. So we have about five or six thousand left in our ditching fund that we have to spend on something.
Okay, but we're only using twenty thousand here, right?
Yeah, we'll approve the work order for what it says. And, uh, when they draw it off your fund, they'll only draw half of it to get to that twenty thousand.
Okay.
So we had twenty, at the start of the year, we had twenty-one thousand in burn fund. Cause I've been reporting that for the last four or five years. So every year, we have to spend like five thousand, or you lose it. But I was saving it for that crossroads group, basically. And, uh, so we can draw up to there and, uh. Got to address it, because the road is terrible. Can't have water running over the road.
So this is for ditching?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission Work Order for ditching on Northside Lindsey Road. Uh, for an amount of twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty, twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Support.
Moved and supported. To approve the work order from the Road Commission in an amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now this is the one, we just added, because it just came up today. And, uh.
I'll let Patty explain it.
I'll let Patty explain it, cause she's the one that worked on it.
Okay, what this is, is, um, on our website, there'll be a link where people can go in and ask to be put on the permanent absentee list. I should've done this a while ago. I finally got around to calling and getting ahold of Joe. Um, and Joe sent me a thing, and it'll take him approximately three hours to do it, maybe less. And it'll cost, the cost is two hundred and eighty-two dollars to get this up to money. Um, that I have to do.
Okay, um, this is, okay, this is the perm, to have the permanent absentee voter form on.
On our website.
Okay, I make motion, um, to, um, have the permanent absentee voter form put on our website for a cost of two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Thank you very much.
Moved and supported. To approve adding, uh, permanent AV link to the website. Now, I'm assuming he's making this flexible enough that in the coming years, you're gonna end up putting more and more election stuff on the website, I'm sure.
There's already, there's another link that goes right to the Secretary of State too, already there. Yes, I'm sure.
Well, who knows, five years, you might be voting on it.
I see they discriminate against robots.
I know.
One of these days, that's gonna change.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the, uh, website link. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please?
Okay, Colleen, yes. Dan? Oh, wait, I skipped Bill. Wait a minute. Let's start this over. Colleen? Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes. Now, we're just putting protections in also, too. So that somebody just can't.
Right, that's.
Use plenty of different names in the.
Right, right, that is why.
That's why, that's why.
Okay. Moving on. The next item is payment of the bills.
Is there any question? Anybody?
I would like to make a motion to approve the bills submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the bills. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please?
Okay. I need to know who made the support. Steven, motion? Support, both of them. All right, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, citizens' comments. Anybody got any questions or comments? We request your name, but it's not necessary, if you don't wanna give it. More activity out there? Why? So, anyway, next, uh, Tuesday, the planning commission meeting is at seven o'clock. And we have a couple of public hearings. And other than that, the consultant for the park is going to hopefully give some type of a presentation. So we can get a recommendation from the planning commission and lead up to the board approval. Cause that's when you get down to the nitty-gritty of what are you gonna do, and what's it gonna cost, and what's it gonna cost?
What kind is that? It's nice.
Seven o'clock, next Tuesday, right here.
Have a question about school spending. Anchor Bay School, um, elections. Do we have them here?
No, they're at, um, Greedo's Elementary. Now, if it was a big election, like in November, and primary or something, then all the school elections are here. But it senses that special school election by itself, they're at Columbus and at Greedo's Elementary.
No, we, uh, we would say, we wanna say across in our election, have the schools run it for us.